All that that we've seen.
We've seen them.
Seasoned? In terms of how we're gonna...
Well, we're going to the year, look at this, thirteen, twenty, twenty-five.
I'm gonna knock on the door again.
I was gonna say, I can go knock on the door.
We should have watched the trends.
Tell them all for the red light.
It doesn't really bother me.
Really?
It's mine.
They're afraid of me getting knocked on.
Oh, my God is finally doing something.
All right, we're going. Good evening and welcome to the February twenty-first, twenty-seventeen meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the pleasure allegiance?
A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could you please take the roll?
Mr. DuPerry? Ms. Hendrickson?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Saunders.
Saunders and Ogless sound a lot alike.
I should from way down here.
Sorry. Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Bealy?
Here.
And Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Thank you. Just for the record, in the absence of Ms. Saunders and Mr. DuPerry, Ms. Hendrickson will be a voting member this evening. And the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January thirtieth, twenty-seventeen meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. First action item, Matthew Chamberlain requests a sketch plan review for a subdivision at two oh three Holmes Road, Professor's map, R twenty-three, lot sixteen. Okay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, this is a sketch plan, so this is an informal application. It's really just the beginning of a discussion between the app, opportunity for the applicant to present concept of what they're looking and proposing to develop and for the board to provide guidance and any issues that you might see. You want the applicant to really delve into any deeper than might, they might normally with a formal application. This is a piece of property off the Holmes Road, which is in the rural and farming district, as well as the aquifer protection overlay district. Due to the characteristics of the site, it is required to go through a conservation subdivision design, which ostensibly requires at least fifty percent of the lots to be maintained as open space. But accordingly, lots are allowed to be smaller than might normally be required in the RF. Allows for less roadway to potentially be built and those sorts of things. So, as staff reviewed the sketch plan, really the principal issues that we flagged were really around ensuring as we go through this process that we're understanding sort of how this property fits into the context of the neighborhood, so to speak. You know, there are some, there's at least one parcel that's a budding open space that was part of a, in a budding or adjoining conservation subdivision, so maybe there's opportunity there to create more of a preserved area. And then also looking at, are there opportunities to enable future right-of-way connections? Is, you know, is this a property that that might make sense to enable those type of connections? Or are the characteristics such that maybe they don't? And again, I think just zooming out a little bit would help understand that. Then I guess the other sort of main element that we raised in our comments just had to do with the wetlands delineation study, and this board has been taking a look at, occasionally doing peer reviews of wetland delineations, and is this a site that we'd want to see that occur? And I guess just in terms of that, the one thing that staff noted was that they have had someone go out, Mark Hampton, do a wetlands delineation on site, just in December. And there seemed to be a few ponds identified on the site, and we think it'd be important for a Vernal Pool study to be done in the next month or two, when, when the timing's right, which is about April, to be part of that analysis. So, with that, I would turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board, Jay. I appreciate the overview from Jay. It's very thorough, very in-depth. I've got the original design to show that we could do nine lots. One of the lots actually will have an existing house on it that was already there, built in the thirties. And that being said, I'll quickly go into the cluster design. I really wasn't intending in doing the presentation tonight, my engineer is sitting at the Saco Town Hall of conflicting meetings. The planner was kind enough to send me notes from the staff review, and I'd like to just kind of quickly go over some of the notes and the responses to them. The first one was understanding about connectivity to open space. We have, based on the ordinances, having to have contiguous open space, we have it set up that open space wraps around all the entire lots. And the connecting subdivision, which would be a but here, I think it was called Bittersweet, their open space would a but our open space. Didn't happen intentionally, kind of happened unintentionally, but it seems to work. The second topic was making sure that there could be potential right-of-way to a future subdivision on any side. Bittersweet, of course, is already developed, and that would be to the left. There is the Johnston property all the way out back. I have not reached out to him nor in a budding property back into the left. It's about a twenty-five, thirty-acre parcel. The Johnson has about a hundred and forty acres. But we will reach out to them to see if there's any potential future need for their point of view, and then take it accordingly. The couple of notes about fire department, I was actually able to reach out to them today about a fire tank and already get a response back, so I know exactly where they're gonna want it and approximately how it's gonna be designed. I'm working with the city police department to confirm a street name, a subdivision name that will work with the city. There was a note about the, making sure that we have proper design for the Hammerhead, and I'm gonna refer back that probably in a month or two when my engineer can present that. There was a note about stormwater and future ownership, and again, that's also underway. The road doesn't extend further than the maximum road length of the city. The lot sizes are between thirty and sixty thousand square feet. We've kept space available to enjoy open space. There are some natural trails that were there. They've been there for many, many years, and I'll point them out here. Where there's a natural trail system that actually wraps around most of the lots in the open space already. And so, we tried to really focus on trying to keep that in its natural state, as well as having, you know, the lots available. That's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Rachel, do you have anything?
Well, Jay answered one of the questions that I had about the pond, but I'm intrigued by the existing trails, and I noticed that there's one that kind of ends in an open space, and was there any thought about connecting it to the proposed roadway so it actually circled all the way around?
Not following you, but...
Well, yeah, that trail right...
Right here?
Right. Was there any thought of connecting...
Right.
Because if you notice, it circles, I assume that the N E T and P easement is also a trail, Woods Road.
So, this is actually all open space, so we don't have a formalized trail, but we could design, we could tie in for a swamp trail to some, to tie into the existing one.
And then if you notice, it goes, and at least it could come out at that, that extension at the end, that in between lot five and six, is that an open?
Lot five.
Five and six.
Yep. That's an open space to access, to link out back.
Right.
Somebody wanted to go out, this is, this is all open space. So, this is designed, so if somebody doesn't want to necessarily walk behind their lot and tie into the open space, they can just walk up the road.
Okay.
I believe we have up twenty-five feet for them to tie in. So, they can walk through the road.
Good. I appreciate that, and I, as I was looking at it, I definitely saw a potential opportunity to make that a circle.
I see. What, one proposal we're looking at for a subdivision name, and the reason I'm going here is that there's a very majestic, it's either a silver birch tree or a yellow birch tree, and it sits just past this trail system. And if anyone's interested in a sidewalk, it will, it's so majestic in its design and the fact it's been opened up around, so it just sits all by itself. My focus is to name it, and again, I don't know if it's a yellow birch or silver birch, but that will be the subdivision name, if it's permitted by the city. So, we're focusing on that in the open space. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Nick?
Thank you. I just want to clarify something real quick. So, one of the questions is whether or not this is an area we'd want to require peer review? And I think I saw two, one of the reasons was because of the time the wetlands are being delineated, which is winter, a little harder to define, I imagine. Is that part of the reasoning behind that request?
Well, I think part of that, and also in, there's, as you see in the wetlands delineation, there's these areas that are identified sort of as ponds, and so, as we look at that, we sort of say, what, what does that mean exactly? And I think the other issue really revolves around the Vernal Pool analysis and being sure that that's done in it, because that, that really does need to be done in a certain timeframe, April, May. It all depends on sort of when weather changes, but, so I think that's really the main focus.
Have you, is that something you've given thought to, which is conducting a further review in April and May?
We knew when I had Mark out there, it was actually beautiful come early December when Mark went out. There wasn't, you know, an inch of snow on the ground, so it was easy to do the wetlands delineation. He did lead me to believe that there's a pretty reasonable chance we'll be looking for a Vernal Pool study, which, of course, he wouldn't be able to do until the time period allowed.
Okay. So, it appears we're relatively on the same page on that.
Yeah. Yeah. Not surprising if it's gonna be asked for.
Okay. And then, I think that's it, except for I had one, one clarifying question here, was the idea to have this proposed roadway, and I believe you said the other, the other potential development spaces to the rear, to the right, which is, looks like north here?
Yeah. If you can kind of picture this, the home through here, there's about a hundred and forty acres sitting at the Johnson property.
Okay.
It was, honestly, there was no thought given to connecting to any other property.
All right.
That was until we got staff notes.
Okay.
But there is, there is a gentleman who is off of Mitchellville Road, he's got thirty-five acres, and then the Johnson property's got a hundred and forty acres. Right here is Bittersweet, it's already established, their open space a but our open space, so there's gonna be no, no point of trying to connect them.
And so, I imagine what the, the request that would be some thought given to maybe bending the road a little and squishing lot five around, so there could be an easement or a pass, is that the idea?
The road, the road was specifically designed to minimize the impact of wetlands. We hooked it over here to really minimize, this is the only wetland we're gonna cross, and we tried to do it in such a way that minimized it so it wasn't sprayed in. So, there was a lot of design to make sure that we didn't touch the wetlands and make sure we kept the open space all contiguous. But originally, there was no intent or no thought put into tying into a future piece.
If I might, this is sort of one of those, you know, areas of the economy between the, what the ordinance seeks. Again, the conservation subdivision design is really aimed at minimizing impact, as was just stated, on wetlands and to preserve sort of the greatest amount of open space possible, and to sort of put those pieces together where feasible, so you're creating larger swaths of natural area. The sort of, the juxtaposition of that is the subdivision ordinance, where it seeks to create interconnected roadways where feasible, you know, where, where it makes sense so that, you know, more efficiency in terms of services, emergency access, and those sorts of things. And so, as staff was drafting these questions, it wasn't so much a, you know, we think this needs to be done. This is really one of those ones where, you know, might be helpful just to zoom out a little bit and understand what that connectivity is, because I think as Mr. Chamberlain already noted, there's a bunch of open space established as part of a prior conservation subdivision off of Mitchell Hill Road that, that sort of connects to the southern end of this property. And so, you know, there, there may not be opportunities to create these right-of-ways, but again, I think just really zooming out just a bit, seeing what those properties look like, trying to understand, understanding that, you know, Mr. Chamberlain doesn't have the ability to go on other people's property to, you know, fully vet what's out there, but if we can look at general contours, sort of state, excuse me, state-level wetlands, and get a sense of what, what's in the area, and maybe this is the exact appropriate design, and it, an interconnection doesn't make sense, so...
I will say that this budding property would probably not be feasible, because the wetland starts on my property and then expands on its estate. So, we would have to go through wetlands to tie into his existing thirty-five acres. The Johnson property? Be more than happy to reach out to that family, and if they're willing to talk. I know it's been in the family a long time. It's not been developed for a long time, and I can't imagine it's gonna be developed anytime soon, but happy to reach out to them.
No, and, and I, don't misunderstand me, I think I just wanted to understand better what it is that could possibly be done. The way I look at it is, if we have an opportunity to actually piece together large tracts of open space, and I think that's, that's a positive as well. So, don't misunderstand me in asking to build a roadway to somebody else's property.
Absolutely.
It's not what I'm getting at. I just wanted to know if that was what the line of thinking from staff was, something could possibly be done down the line. Also, the other thing, which is when you go to market these and sell these, some of these people are probably believing they're gonna end up on a dead-end road, which is, of course, a more valuable asset to a lot of people. So, you know, without being very clear about interconnectivity down the line somewhere, it's, I don't think it's necessarily very fair to you or any future owners of that property, based on what we're looking at. So, that's it, that's what I got to know.
Thank you.
Thanks. Roger?
Is this primarily a wooded lot?
It's a beautifully wooded lot.
Okay. And the trails, are they more or less like, you know, timber or hot?
The gentleman I'm buying this from is third or fourth generation. They used to own a sawmill, and actually, I think they even cut material right on-site and built some of these structures that are there. What's there is a lot of tall hemlock, a lot of tall pine, a little bit of hardwood, but it's just absolutely stunningly beautiful land.
I actually have a question for you, Jay. On, on the open space, I'm looking at this map here, and I notice on the, on the south side of Holmes Road, there's a lot of connectivity with all those homes there. But on the north side with the open space, are there any provisions where if you had a budding open spaces, does that prohibit any future road connectivity?
So, I would say with the open space that is associated with Bittersweet, where I think this speaks to what Mr. McGee was just talking about, about expectations for future connections, where that open space has been established and it's stated purpose, and in a conservation easement, that you really couldn't put a roadway through that? And so, that's where, you know, it's, that's part of the board's job, sort of at this stage of the process, is to sort of look, are there those areas that make sense to at least continue a right-of-way, if not actually build the road at this time, at least leave the right-of-way there for future possible connections? And if there isn't, then sort of, as, you know, as depicted here, sort of closing off that Hammerhead with lot private property all around it, well, maybe that in, you know, in this, you know, site context makes sense.
Okay. And this, this project right here then, does the town have a preference whether they want to go with a conventional plan versus the cluster?
It's a required, so the ordinance requires when you have more than, there's a couple of provisions, but in this one, it's if you have greater than an acre of wetlands, then you have to do a conservation subdivision design, so...
Do you have just over three?
Yep. So, there's no, no choice in the matter.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm all set.
Thanks. Susan?
Thank you. First of all, just to say that you obviously know we're gonna be watching for the wells and the septic systems very carefully. We do anyway, but this particular, I'm sure you've already met our engineer. Because it's an aquifer protection overlay district, we have to put that out there, because it doesn't happen every day, we are dealing with a development on and, on and protection, I want to get an aquifer overlay protection area. I want to live here. This is gorgeous.
I would, if the board's not going to do a sidewalk?
Oh, I think we should do a sidewalk.
You should.
That's on my list.
I would love to have you on that.
I really think we should do a sidewalk on this one. Question about what is labeled Woods Road, that is not the same thing as the trails. There are pieces that say Woods Road all around the place here. Those are not really trails.
I don't have Woods.
You don't have them on yours? I'm looking, mine...
We have very clear paths.
Right. I know, but I want to know what the...
It's running.
Yeah. I think those are probably skitter, probably skitter trails would be my assumption. That's typically what, what's seen, is that sound right?
I mean, I'm not sure why they're on here if it's not something that we need to be knowing. Don't worry about it.
My engineer could explain it better if he was here.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that I think I know what Woods Roads are, and I think that our assistant town planner just explained it, and we want to make sure they are gone off these drawings. They're confusing. Yes, it's wonderful. All these trails are great. I can't wait to see them. Yes, I think that Vernal Pool's, another wetland delineation around Vernal Pool's is very important. The road design is gonna be important, especially where you're gonna be covering, where you're going to be crossing the wetlands in terms of how much fill there's going to be. We just watch that all very carefully. And I'm not sure the ponds, never mind. I'm gonna wait until you come back. I'll wait until you come back, because you're gonna come back with a more delineation.
I will, just to touch base on where the road's gonna go in relation to the wetlands, there's actually a beaten-down path that the current owner has put in over it, and we specifically tried to work to incorporate that to minimize the wetlands.
Okay. Okay. Good. Is this, the open space will be owned by a homeowner, homeowners?
Homeowners association, yes.
Right. And if, again, if it's as lovely as you say it is...
Was the idea to have this proposed roadway, and I believe you said the other potential development spaces to the rear, to the right, which is, looks like north here?
Yeah, if you can kind of pitch us the home through here, there's about 140 acres sitting in the Johnson property.
Okay.
There was, honestly, there was no thought given to connecting to any other property.
Alright.
That was until we got staff notes.
Okay.
But there is, there is a gentleman who is off of Mitchell Hill Road, he's got 35 acres, and then the Johnson property, so 140 acres. Right here is Bittersweet, it's already established, their open space, but our open space, so there's going to be no, no point of trying to connect them.
And so, I imagine what the, the request that would be some thought given to maybe bending the road a little and squishing Lot 5 around, so there could be an easement or a pass, is that the idea?
The road, the road was specifically designed to minimize the impact of wetlands. We, we hooked it over here to really minimize, this is the only wetland we're going to cross, and we tried to do it in such a way that minimized it so it wasn't sprayed in. So, there was a lot of design to make sure that we didn't touch the wetlands, and make sure we kept the open space all contiguous. But originally, there was no intent or no thought put into tying into a future piece.
If I might, this is sort of one of those, you know, areas of the economy between the, what the ordinance seeks. Again, the conservation subdivision design is really aimed at minimizing impact, as was just stated, on wetlands, and to preserve sort of the greatest amount of open space possible, and to sort of put those pieces together where feasible, so you're creating larger swaths of natural area. The sort of, the juxtaposition of that is the subdivision ordinance, where it seeks to create interconnected roadways where feasible, you know, where, where it makes sense, so that, you know, more efficiency in terms of services, emergency access, and those sorts of things. And so, as staff was drafting these questions, it wasn't so much a, you know, we think this needs to be done, this is really one of those ones where, you know, might be helpful just to zoom out a little bit and understand what that connectivity is, because I think as Mr. Chamberlain already noted, there's a bunch of open space established as part of a prior conservation subdivision off of Mitchell Hill Road, that, that sort of connects to the southern end of this property. And so, you know, there, there may not be opportunities to create these right of ways, but again, I think just really zooming out just a bit, seeing what those properties look like, trying to understand, understanding that, you know, Mr. Chamberlain doesn't have the ability to go on other people's property to, you know, fully vet what's out there, but if we can look at general contours, sort of state, excuse me, state level wetlands, and get a sense of what, what's in the area, and maybe this is the exact appropriate design, and it, an interconnection doesn't make sense, so.
I will say that this abiding property would probably not be feasible, because the wetlands start on my property and then expand on its edge. So, we would have to go through wetlands to tie into his existing 35 acres. The Johnson property?
Be more than happy to reach out to that family, and if they're willing to talk. I know it's been in the family a long time, it's not been developed for a long time, and I can't imagine it's going to be developed anytime soon, but happy to reach out to them.
No, and, and I, don't misunderstand me, I think I just wanted to understand better what it is that could possibly be done. The way I look at it is, if we have an opportunity to actually piece together large tracts of open space, and I think that's, that's a positive as well. So, don't misunderstand me in asking to build a roadway to somebody else's property, it's not what I'm getting at. I just wanted to know if that was what the line of thinking from staff was, something could possibly be done down the line. Also, the other thing, which is when you go to market these and sell these, some of these people are probably believing they're going to end up on a dead end road, which is, of course, a more valuable asset to a lot of people. So, you know, without being very clear about interconnectivity down the line somewhere, it's, I don't think it's necessarily very fair to you or any future owners of that property, based on what we're looking at. So, that's it, that's what I got to know.
Thank you.
Thanks. Roger?
Is this primarily a wooded lot?
It's a beautifully wooded lot.
Okay. And the trails, are they more less like, you know, timber or hot?
The gentleman I'm buying this from is third or fourth generation. They used to own a sawmill, and actually, I think they even cut material right on site and built some of these structures that are there. What's there is a lot of tall hemlock, a lot of tall pine, a little bit of hardwood, but it's just absolutely stunningly beautiful land.
I, I actually have a question for you, Jay, on, on the open space. I'm looking at this map here, and I noticed on the, on the south side of Homes Road, there's a lot of connectivity with all those homes there. But on the north side, with the open space, are there any provisions where if you had a budding open spaces, does that prohibit any future road connectivity?
So, I would say with the open space that is associated with Bittersweet, where I think that speaks to what Mr. McGee was just talking about, about expectations for future connections, where that open space has been established, and it's stated purpose, and in a conservation easement, that you really couldn't put a roadway through that. And so, that's where, you know, it's, that's part of the board's job, sort of at this stage of the process, is to sort of look, are there those areas that make sense to at least continue a right of way, if not actually build the road at this time, at least leave the right of way there for future possible connections? And if there isn't, then sort of, as, you know, as depicted here, sort of closing off that Hammerhead with lot, private property all around it, well, maybe that, you know, in this, you know, site context makes sense.
Okay, and this, this project right here then, does the town have a preference whether they want to go with a conventional plan versus the cluster?
It's a required, so the ordinance requires, when you have more than, there's a couple of provisions, but in this one, it's if you have greater than an acre of wetlands, then you have to do a conservation subdivision design, so.
You have just over three.
Yep, so there's no, no choice in the matter.
Okay, alright, okay. I'm all set.
Thanks. Susan?
Thank you. First of all, just to say that you obviously know we're going to be watching for the wells and the septic systems very carefully, we do anyway, but this particular, I'm sure you've already met our engineer, because it's in an aquifer protection overlay district, we have to put that out there, because it doesn't happen every day. We are dealing with a development on and, on and protection, get an aquifer overlay protection area. I want to live here. This is gorgeous.
I would, if, if the board's not going to do a site walk?
Oh, I think we should do a site walk.
You should.
That's on my list.
I would love to have you on that.
I really think we should do a site walk on this one. Question about what is labeled Woods Road, that is not the same thing as the trails. There are pieces that say Woods Road all around the place here. Those are not really trails.
I don't have Woods.
You don't have them on yours? I'm looking, mine?
We have very clear paths.
Right. I know, but I want to know what the.
It's running.
Yeah, I, I think those are probably skitter, probably skitter trails would be my assumption, that's typically what, what's seen, is that sound right?
I mean, I'm not sure why they're on here, if it's not something that we need to be knowing, don't worry about it.
My engineer could explain it better if he was here.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that, I think I know what Woods Roads are, and I think that our assistant town planner just explained it, and we want to make sure they are gone off these drawings, they're confusing. Yes, it's wonderful, all these trails are great, I can't wait to see them. Yes, I think that Vernal Pools, another wetland delineation around Vernal Pools is very important. The road design is going to be important, especially where you're going to be covering, where you're going to be crossing the wetlands in terms of how much fill there's going to be. We just watch that all very carefully. And I'm not sure, the ponds, never mind, I'm going to wait until you come back, I'll wait until you come back, because you're going to come back with a more delineation.
I, I will, just to touch base on where the road's going to go in relation to the wetlands, there's actually a beaten down path that the current owner has put in over it, and we specifically tried to work to incorporate that to minimize the wetlands.
Okay, okay, good. Is this, the open space will be owned by a homeowner, homeowners?
Homeowners Association, yes.
Right. And if, again, if it's as lovely as you say it is, it might be really wonderful to put in a small parking lot. Down at the area that Rebecca was, I mean, Rachel was.
For trail access?
Trail access. As Rachel was pointing out, down near Lot 2, I don't know what that wetland looks like, it might be much too wet to do something like that, but just an opportunity. Of course, you could do it up at the Hammerhead as well, while we probably couldn't do it there. Just a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Don't want to go into it tonight, but just a thought, as an opportunity, if it's as nice as I know it's going to be to have a small parking for non-paved, for people who want to take a hike, I think it'd be lovely. Yes, I'm looking forward to seeing this again, and I don't have any further questions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If I can ask that, can I come back up for preliminary before a wetland delineation if the, my engineer can get everything done in time? And again, we know it's, no, I'm sorry, the Vernal Pool.
I think the, if I may, I think the Vernal Pool study will be sort of an integral part of a preliminary plan, because that will identify if there are any required setbacks, and if lots are being located where they should be or shouldn't be, so I think that is going to be a key component of that preliminary submission.
Excellent, thank you.
I think that becomes kind of a threshold type item for this type of development, but we're getting there.
Awesome.
We'll be here before you know it. So, I think we've covered things pretty well here, I do appreciate, it's always helpful at this stage to get the, kind of the point by point, you know, succinct responses to, to the staff comments and kind of where you are on those things, so that's really helpful. We look forward to seeing how that Vernal Pool study comes out. The, I think there's a discussion on open space, these are the connectivity, and as Jay points out, that's a little bit of a, you know, that's one of the spots in the ordinance where there's sort of a, not necessarily conflicting, but.
Could go either way.
Could sort of go either way, and I think I would tend to agree with those who say, could say that while it's certainly worth exploring, and we appreciate any efforts to continue to, you know, do that due diligence, that in the end, it may be, it may be better to end up with sort of, you know, larger swaths of, of unbroken open space, which is a pretty rare thing these days, so we'll see how that all plays out. As August made a good point about the aquifer protection overlay, and that is something we definitely need to have on, on the radar. Road design, we touched on, potential trail parking, and we do encounter that sometimes when, when there is such an attractive site, and we understand there's a sort of a balancing act there, you don't want to make it, you know, too attractive, so to speak, to the point where it becomes an issue, but if it's a resource that's there, it might be nice if it's feasible to, to have, have some kind of infrastructure there. And, yeah, I mean, I'd be all for a site walk whenever that's feasible, provided that it, you know, meshes with your, with your timing, and I think if we're, we're looking at getting into April or May with the Vernal Pool study anyway, then, then maybe that dovetails pretty well, and we can put our boots on and walk around out there, so.
I would be excited to have you out there.
Okay. I think that pretty well covers everything, is there anything that you need from us at this point beyond that?
No, this is great, very informative, I appreciate it, thank you for working with me, not being an engineer, not having my gentleman here, so.
Alright.
Thank you.
You did, you did fine, thank you. Item number five on the agenda, Commercial Place LOC requests a sketch plan review for Enterprise Drive, Assessor's Map U-39, Lot 47-1 through 36. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Ms. Chair. I think most board members will recall, this item was before the board in the fall, I believe it was October, as part of the first step in the plan development review process, which is the site inventory and analysis phase. The next phase in the development process, the planned development review process, is a master plan review process. However, the applicant sort of asked, in working with staff, to come back to the board to really have a discussion principally around the question of sort of density, or understanding the commercial to residential ratio that will be allowable to be built out, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. Just sort of background for the property, this is an approved commercial subdivision back in 2003, Enterprise Business Park, which has been built out, maybe about a third to a quarter of the lots have been built out, something to that effect. Since the original subdivision approval, which allowed, the original zoning, when it was approved, really only allowed commercial development. Since then, and just within the last year or two, the Highgus Parkway zoning district, which this is in, was updated, and now allows for a mix of use, mixed-use development. It allows for residential to be mixed in with commercial, provided that the residential development is no more than 40% of the overall floor area of the development. So, with that, part of the, the job of the board and the applicant is going to be to figure out what's going to be developed here. So, so to that end, there's about 15 lots that remain undeveloped, and so, the idea is for the board, again, and applicant, to work together to try to extrapolate sort of a build-out scenario for the remaining commercial lots, and how that will then relate to the amount of residential that's allowed to be developed. So, to that end, the applicant has provided the board with a matrix of the existing nine commercial lots that have been built out, and what the sort of sizes are, and the overall average, which is roughly around, I can't remember, maybe around 15,000 square feet of build-out on those nine lots. And then they're, again, making some assumptions around, which is all you can do, around the remaining undeveloped commercial lots, about how much development could occur on those. And there, the assumption there is about 30,000 square feet of development per lot. So, this is really the board's first time dealing with this new updated zoning, and having to work towards these unknowns. So, it's important that both the board and applicant understand, you know, that the zoning only allows for 40% of the floor area to be built out as residential. So, whatever the build-out scenario is, there's going to be, has to be a mechanism in place that ensures that the commercial development and the residential development occur in that ratio. So, again, it's really, you know, part of this discussion is, how are we making the assumptions about the build-out of these undeveloped lots? You know, are we using the right assumptions? Is this the likely scenario that we should expect to see? So, I think that is sort of the critical element of our discussion, there's a few other points in the applicant's submission, but I think for now, I'll sort of let those comments stand, and be happy to answer other questions as we go forward, but hopefully it sets the stage somewhat for you.
Okay, thanks, and I'll hand it over to the applicant's representative.
Good evening, members of the board and Jay. My name is Jason Vafiatis, and I am with Atlantic Resource Consultants. And Jay, I just summed up pretty succinctly what I've been struggling with for about a month and a half, so he should be getting paid to do what I do. Yeah, so the primary reason we're here tonight is, as Jay said, to sort of opine and wrestle a little bit with, you know, with, how do we sort of, we're trying to solve an equation with two variables, but we only have one equation, that we don't have, you know, to hit the 60/40 scenario that's in the zoning, we, we have a lot of lots left that are unbuilt, and so how do we get to that number, and then, as he said, how do we sort of ensure that things kind of stay in place? You recall from the site analysis back in 2016, that item was left open for discussion, and there was a number in that site analysis, which I believe, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, was like 27,500 square feet per, per lot, including the developed and undeveloped lots that would have remained commercial. I thought that number was a little aggressive, and so when we went through the master plan sort of planning, so to speak, of providing a layout, what I've actually done here, and I apologize you don't have this, because this came from Jay's comment response to the application, is to put these lots in, I basically did a sketch plan for each lot, saying, okay, what would be the maximum build-out that you could feasibly get on those lots? And in the next submission, and with staff, we'll go through, we'll have a chance to review this, but, so those numbers you have in the matrix are actually what you're seeing on this plan. The green ones would be two-story, or in some cases, they're one and a half-story, so there's half of top floor, and then the, the yellow ones are just single-story. And that's primarily, I think, one of the things that we wanted you to look at, and the other things were, there's some other attachments for traffic data that we picked up, and, and just the general layout, if the, the board had an opinion about how we laid out the rest of the subdivision. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the board, see if they have comments, questions.
Okay. Who wants to take the first whack at this decision?
Question, I don't have any, any, anything to offer at all. Questions? What you have up there differs from what I have in, the green, the green has been added?
Yes.
Right. So, I go back to what I'm looking at, which is pink.
Which is, what you're looking at is?
Right.
I'll hold this up here until we flip back to.
Please do. So, that indicates a multi, multi-unit buildings.
Yes.
Residential.
Correct.
And the gray around it is parking, et cetera.
Yes, and that's actually, that's the code, that, that layout would, would bear off.
So, where is the, so we're not going to have any commercial at all?
I think that's where the other plans, so this subdivision, when it was approved.
No, I understand what it is we need to do, I just don't know where it's going to be.
Yes, and so, so Susan's saying, you're perhaps envisioning something that was commercial first floor, residential second and third floor, or even, even a mix within the mix itself, is that?
I'm envisioning some kind of a mix within this piece of property.
Yes.
And I don't know how that, how that would, I mean, where would you put it?
So, the whole, so the application sort of assumes that this whole, the whole thing you see here, so there's all the trails, there's the existing Enterprise Business Park, this was the old Phase 3, and this goes back, I think, before any of us were here.
And it includes the blue lines, the, the green lines below.
Yes, and those are, those are the existing trail systems there.
And the one, the land that is now white but surrounded by green is where the industrial slash commercial will go.
Yes.
So, we're separating out the residential from the commercial, on the same lot.
Within the same subdivision.
On the same lot.
Within the overall same parent property, correct, there are going to be, it's going to be three phases of commercial development essentially, two of which are largely built out.
No, I get, I get that, I'm, I'm on a roll here, let me, let me continue, I'm going to lose my train of thought, okay, flip it over for me if you would, please.
Yep.
So, with this one, we now have additional residential, because that's what the green is.
Oh, oh, no, sorry, no.
Alright.
The green is commercial, so the only residential is still what you're looking at, is the, is the ordinance.
Okay. And down below where the green is, below the wetland area, okay, the green below, those are also going to be commercial?
Yes, unbuilt commercial.
Are we predicting other commercial can go in there, I mean, is there space and room and the land to accept more?
So, this, what you're looking at here would be 100% lots completely built out, final.
I don't see, I can't see yellow from here.
Yeah, so, right, so the, the yellow ones are, yeah, this is the, the risk we run when we bring up.
The yellow down, there's yellow down below too, next to the green.
That's unbuilt commercial, yep.
Okay.
Yellow up here too.
Yes, I know that, that I can actually see, the down below, okay, so the trick is, that what is now pink, and is going to be residential.
Yes.
It's going to be 40% of this entire lot, this entire subdivision, and we need to make sure that, we need to make sure, like we can make sure of anything in this scenario. The goal is to have it be 40%, and the rest of it's going to be 60%, but we can't guarantee that, because we don't know who's going to come in.
Exactly.
Give me a clue how we're going to do that.
Well, and that's.
Here's a word that bothers me, extrapolate. I don't think that this board, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been around a long time, but I've never heard the board use the word extrapolate. We deal with, we deal with pieces of, you know, lines on a drawing that say, this is exactly how many square feet, and this is exactly how much, and then we make a decision, we don't extrapolate. So, I'm totally confused as to what we can do about that, Mr.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a new bit of zoning, and so that's where, again, you know, there's, there's two pieces to this, and that's why, you know, staff has identified that coming up with the future build-out scenario that's reasonable is critical. There's going to be other checks down the road to be sure that the commercial development and residential development ratio occurs, but at this stage, the best we can do is say, what is the likely development scenario? And it may be well that, you know, again, where this is new, I guess it's, it's hard to, you know, I was talking with Dan Bacon earlier today, there's, there is going to be additional sort of legal analysis and administrative, you know, sort of phasing to this type of development, to sort of put checks and balances in, since that says, if we assume the undeveloped lots are building out at 30,000, let's just, you know, that's what the, the applicant suggested, if that's the assumption we're making, you know, we'll have to say, well, you know, only so much residential can occur before X amount of commercial occurs. Something to that effect.
Okay, let me interrupt, because that's exactly where I want you to go, that I want you to go with you. It's like, I don't, there's a difference between making, allowing a subdivision and phasing the subdivision, which is essentially what we'd be doing here, but it would have to be worded very differently. In other words, X number of units, X number of feet after we get, or as we get, or up to, and then there has to be commercial before we can go to the next phase of residential. And quite frankly, I don't care how that gets worked out, because it's not my job, but I want to make sure I understand that that is how it, we're going into it saying that that's how it's going to work, as opposed to, here are all your residential, build it out, and bring in the, the commercial when you can. No.
Yes, no, I think, so part of, right, so there, there are these other components that need to happen, but, and I think, you know, that's getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. I think the first thing that we need to do is understand, is the build-out scenario that they're suggesting, 30,000 square feet on average for the remaining undeveloped commercial lots, is that a reasonable expectation?
How do we know?
Well, I think that's the critical information that's been provided, is we know that the development to date on the lots, the nine lots have been built out, average about 15,000 square feet per building. The assumption in 2003 with the DOT traffic study was around 12,000 to 15,000 square foot of building per lot, so that's what's been built. So, those, those are the, so the assumption back in '03 was around 15,000, what's been built is around 15,000, and what staff put in our comments was, if we're going to make the jump to 30,000, what's the rationale?
If I may, you have the crux of it, just looking at how the, maybe stating the obvious, but looking at how that math works, is that the more ambitious they are with their commercial projection, the more housing they can propose now.
Correct.
So, I mean, and there's a separate discussion that we were getting into about enforcement mechanisms and how you.
I don't want to go into the enforcement mechanisms either.
How you monitor that going forward, but.
I'm just concerned about the 15,000, which is being built out, and the 30,000, which is being protected by the applicant, is what they can base their residential on, and that that is a form of mathematics that I've flunked in high school. I don't understand how we can say, what are they basing it on? Where do they get the 30,000 from? I don't understand where that comes from.
If I may, I.
I don't think we've heard that from, from the applicant, yeah.
And I'll generally agree that this is, this is the max that you would, that you would ever see, and it actually, it leaves room, so at this calculation, it leaves about 10 or 12% more available floor area than what we're, what we're proposing, so, you know, so, so I think to take a more realistic approach, you know, it's going to be one of these iterative processes that we're working with town staff to say, you know, what, what sort of backing proof can, can, you know, the, the developer and, and us kind of provide? us kind of provide to work in concert with the town. But I, I hear you, Susan, you know, it's, it's, it's one of these, it was a, it was a subdivision that was, the zoning changed after it was approved, and so you can do something different in it, but that something different, the zoning was anticipating you're starting new. So it's kind of a, we're forcing into a new zoning with the subdivision.
I give up. I don't, I don't get how we're going to get into this, but those are my concerns. I don't know how to get into this.
Roger?
Um, question for Jay. Is this, is this going to be going before the town council at all, or is this decision strictly ours?
Nope. This is a planning board review. It's not a contract zone. It's planning board review and.
Okay. Um, is there, has there been any discussion about the phasing of the multifamily units? How, you know, how long that's going to take?
Yes, and certainly, I don't think that you would see this all built at once, and so I'm just kind of throwing this out there, but I can envision a scenario where you say, okay, you get phase one, which is one-third of what you're doing, or somehow tied to maybe the existing components that are there, and say, you know, and, and sort of build in the phasing, uh, a little bit beyond that. Um, so there's certainly, we're still sort of back in our camp, we're sort of wrestling around with, you know, how is that build-out going to be? And there's a couple of, um, very interested parties that are, that are looking to team up and develop this. And so we're just trying to get ahead of what obviously is going to be a very confusing issue. And that's why we came in as a sketch plan, to just kind of.
Based on what the, uh, commercial build-out is right now, how many multifamily buildings could you, did you look at that at all, right now?
I, I did, yeah. And depending on what you do with the buildings, you know, you could probably get two or three.
Two or three?
You know, some 80, 85 units.
Um, what, I, I guess another question, Jay, is what happens if we, no, I'm looking at, at this sheet here, and it says here the, um, the lots reserved for, um, commercial development, it's 23,000, not 30. Is that, is that not relevant anymore?
No, that, that is relevant. You're right. It's, it's, um, the 24,000 is, that's the average of all, how many commercial, of all, I'm sorry, 24 commercial lots? The, the basically, the, the 15,000 average that's been built to date, and the 30,000 average assumption of the 15 that have been unbuilt, you, you, you put that all together, that's where the 23, 9, 30 comes from, 24,000.
Okay, the next question then is, what, what if we went with this assumption, 24,000 on average? And they, at the end of the, um, all the build-out, it's only averaging 18,000. What hap, what's, what happens then?
That's, that's sort of the question we were talking about. That's, that's the next, that's the next step. I think right now, um, we don't have answers to that. I think there, there will need to be additional legal review and analysis done as this goes through the process. What we're really asking the board right now is, does making the assumption of essentially an average of 30,000 square feet per undeveloped lot to date, is that a reasonable assumption to make? And again, if the board doesn't feel like you have the information, you know, this is, this is not an easy discussion to have, because it is conjecture, um, but that's, I mean, the, if, if I might, just to sort of put it simply.
Thanks.
As staff looked at this, you know, I think that the two key pieces of evidence the board has that are known is the DOT permit, or the permitting that happened in 2003, which assumed about roughly 15,000 square foot per lot, and what's been built, roughly 15,000 square foot per lot. So there was an assumption back in '03, and there's been development since '03, that both seem to equal each other. Now what the applicant is asking the board to do is to make the leap to, say, 30,000 square feet per lot. Staff's not suggesting that's an impossible leap to make, but we just want to understand what, what's the evidence being provided? And to date, what was provided, you know, we, you know, there's, there's boxes on a plan. If that's enough for the board, then, you know, that's at the direction of the board. But there might be additional analysis that needs to be done to help the board get there.
And I will add, we're not asking you to make any decisions tonight, we're just, if we could get your opinions and, and suggestions, we would take that, and we'd work with staff to sort of, um, you know, I guess my argument, or not really an argument, but physically you can do it, um, and the DOT, you know, I'm well-versed in that permit that Jay's talking about. And, um, I will note that some of the, predominantly a lot of the stuff that has been done, with the exception of this lot here, um, the, uh, that, the old contact lot, there's some of the smaller lots that have been done. So if you took, say you took a ratio of the existing, I'm just throwing this out there, the existing developed area of lots per building envelope, and then apply that ratio to the unbuilt ones, might be a way of coming up with a, at least there's data to measure that out, and that's one thing that we looked at.
That's what I was going to ask next, is, if you've done any analysis of the, the billable, the floor area of the existing lots compared to the area of those lots, and compare that to what's still available.
Yep, I, I have found that number, yep. I've, I've analyzed this thing more times than I want to, but, yeah, it's a.
So do you think, do you think it's 30 for the future? Do you, do you undevelop, commercially, do you think it could be 30, or is, or is that a stretch?
You know, I, I, you can do, as an engineer, I can, I can sit in front of you today and say, those numbers can be, it's permitted through the DEP this way, and that's why I included the traffic data. The traffic data, um, we would have to augment the traffic movement permit, pay some fees as part of that, but that, this design here can be done engineering-wise, yes. Now, I can't answer questions on what the market would put.
True, yeah.
You know, we've even talked about, we kicked around ideas, you know, do you indeed restrict minimum building sizes and development sizes to the lots as part of this, to say, that might be a legal mechanism to sort of bear trap the number at this point. I mean, there's, there's a whole number of, of things that I think we're looking at, but certainly your feedback is, is appreciated, because that's kind of, it's kind of, that's where we're starting from and.
Yeah. I mean, it is an interesting dilemma, because we're kind of working backwards here, in a way, so, um, this is not a, a full build-out of the commercials, so we can't say, okay, you can do this, and it's, it's in there nice. Um, I was pleased, I was kind of curious with the, with the original plans we have, I was wondering whether you were just abandoning the other access road going out to Route One, but it looks like on yours, that's going to be commercial development.
Yes, yeah, no, it's.
Okay.
Fully, fully intended, everything that was approved to remain. What we did do, not to change the conversation, we did provide access based on the site analysis meeting that we had. There used to be a connection to a Three Diamonds Realty property up here, which is predominantly wetlands, and like we talked about the last project, you'd never see a connection there. However, there are uplands to the Scarborough Downs property at the end of the parcel, if you go all the way to the end of the map there. And we did envision building out to provide a connection there. And, you know, there's some benefit to actually making that connection sooner than later, if that could ever work out with the Scarborough Downs owners, because that kind of alleviates a lot of other engineering issues, but we're not going to, we're not going to go down that rabbit hole tonight, we're just kind of.
Well, I guess, um, I don't know. I, I, I think if you can come up with some, you know, some extrapolation with the, um, you know, with what, what's there now, and what may occur, because I think 30 seems to me like it's, it's, it's over-optimistic, you know, but.
30 is the answer to, can you do it?
Yeah.
And then I say yes, and then, right, exactly. So there's a, there's some other things where, you know, Jay and I will get involved with, you know, okay, well then, what's feasible versus what's reasonable.
I mean, Jay, just, say, say they got to, um, almost 80% build-out on the commercial, and they were nowhere near what, what they're going to satisfy, what would they do? Go be, go be zoning boys and get?
Again, I, you know, I, this is our first project, looking at this type of zoning, so what those checks and balances are going to be, how we ensure that 60/40 ratio, I think that's where we are going to need the town attorney, you know, some legal analysis and, and, you know, a, a host of belts and suspenders put in place as this goes forward. So, um, yeah, I, I don't have the, I don't have those answers. I think, you know, the sort of notion you put forth about doing a proportional floor area, floor area, that's sort of the type of analysis that I had been thinking about as well. Um, you know, that might make some sense, as really, what's, what's, you know, what's the market sort of, what's the market demand, Ben at least, will know that, and, and then maybe there, you know, can be some other assumptions made based off that, but.
I'm going to use up my card.
Nick?
All right. So there are nine lots, correct, that are developed?
Yes.
So of those lots, only one of the lots that's currently developed is greater than 20,000, not even 30, greater than 20,000. So one of the nine. There's three of them that don't even make 10,000. So I think the answer is probably based on a percentage, what, what's being thrown around. And I think it, if you look at your 40,000-ish total size in square feet, and you look at the size of the current buildings that are in place, it's about 20%. So if that tends to be the average of what you're showing for a build-out, let's say 20%, I think that's the calculation. You would have a better time convincing me that's a better calculation than saying, this is what can be done, can we do it?
And, and I will add, so it's floor area, not footprint, so if you built a two-story structure, obviously you get, you know, and, and so then we got to look at, you know, if you look at developments of this kind, this one, and then others, to get sort of a, a larger pool of data. How many of those structures are going to be two-stories? Then you get into the, you can't really go three-stores, because you've got, you know, the, the part, without confusing you, you know, the parking matrix changes, because it changes with use. If you have a, a industrial facility where it's a, a warehouse or a manufacturing facility, you need much less parking than if you have a professional office. So, you know, say we could land a, a big fish, or that Mr. Miley can land a big fish, you know, it could completely change the numbers, you just, right, we don't know that, so we're, we got to come up with, as you say, a reasonable sort of calculation.
I suspect that you have a starting point of data with your current build-out, and I suspect as a person in the audience who'd be glad to help you with a commercial development area, that you could use to analyze whether or not the percentages are actually matching what you're seeing from development in Scarborough.
Yep.
Um, with, with these types of allowances, in the Highgits Parkway area. I'm sure there's something out there. So I think Karen would be a good person to talk. Karen, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Start for me. All right, um, I think that's the way to go. I, I really.
No, I, I think that's.
I think throwing a hard number, 30,000, is asking a lot of this board. It's my opinion.
All right, thanks, Nick. Rachel?
Yeah, um, yeah, a couple of things. One, one very minor, and that is that Jay can answer, that the clubhouse, is that counted as the residential?
Um, good question. I guess I haven't dove that deep into worrying about parsing it that far at this point.
Well, I just looked at the square footage involved in it, and I don't, I doubt that it makes a difference, but it was a question.
Yeah.
I, I guess, part of my concern is how long it would take us to find out if we were right, in terms of, of guessing that the building of the commercial area was going to end up being the 60% versus the, the residential. How long has it been since one of the commercial lots was sold?
That's a very good question, and I'm, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know that answer. I can certainly get that. I do know, I don't know the extent at which where the negotiations are, but there, there may be one selling soon, um, and, uh, Jay and I have had a private conversation about that. I don't know what the extent of where that's heading, but that would actually be a good piece of information if we, we got that far, but, um.
Yeah, and if we started to look at any sort of ultimately phasing, it would be helpful to get a sense of expected sales in commercial lots such as these in, in the Scarborough or the surrounding areas, so that we know, are we going to get that footage, the square footage, um, in three years, five years, 15 years?
Yeah.
Say, and, uh, again, I go back to, when will we know that we were right, or wrong, in, in the analysis that, that we did? So that's, that's what I would like to delve into a little bit, I think.
Yep.
Thank you. So just building on some of the, some of the recent comments here, I, I think we're on the right track, um, based on, you know, what Roger and Nick were saying about, you know, taking some of the, some of the actual, the data that you have, and some of the other reference, reference points and data points that are out there, um, and developing, kind of fleshing out some sort of methodology that, that we can hang our hats on a little bit. I think, you know, you run into the, you always run the risk with this sort of thing of, of running into the limitations of small sample size, and then trying to extrapolate too much based on that with a very dynamic real estate market, you know, who would have predicted 12 months ago what would be happening right now politically and economically? So, um, I guess to me, that, that just argues for, you know, all other things being equal, or when in doubt, err on the more conservative side. That just seems like the prudent thing to me, but, um, that said, you know, we will look forward to seeing what you've sort of come back with, and I think it would be interesting to see it in terms of, you know, different, um, different floor areas and, and building heights, um, and, and also be informed, at least have, as a sort of, whether it's directly incorporated into the methodology, or sort of there, sort of in the background, or as added context, sort of some data about the frequency of turnover and development, and what your assumptions are going forward. Because I think once you get beyond a certain amount of time, that just, the, the value of that, any projection is going to diminish significantly. And that sort of gets to what, what Rachel was sort of alluding to, you know, that, um, and that's, I, you've been wrestling with this, obviously, you know.
Yeah, and, and we do have a lot of the data.
A lot of unknowns.
A lot of the data that you're, you're talking about, and we're, we're gathering it, and I guess the reason we came in at, at this point is that, well, let's not inundate you with, with a lot of the data and get, you know, where we're heading.
No, I think it was a useful conversation to have, and, and hopefully you've gotten a good sense from the board. I think it's fair to say, as a whole, we're skeptical of the 30,000, and I think we're prone, we're, we're inclined to want to err on the lower side, but, but we're open to seeing what kind of a case you can, you can make.
Sure.
Using the data. Just as a quick side note, there's a question about, and this, this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but a question about how the clubhouse would be counted? And I'm not sure how the town would approach that, or how the ordinance would look at that, um, but I know in certain contexts, like the, in sort of the low-income housing tax credit world that I'm familiar with, that, something like that would count as residential as long as it was used exclusively by the residents, um, and was not something that was bringing in, you know, independent revenue.
Right.
But that's, that's, uh, getting into the weeds. So, um, hopefully that's useful feedback and.
No, it is. It's, it's been a big help, and I appreciate everyone's, you know, kind of thinking outside the box a little bit.
All right, sure.
Just one last question. Is the number of 10 units, multifamily units, is that, is that the requirement to make it economically feasible to do it?
I don't think so. I, that was, uh, that was sort of one particular developer's sort of vision for what was going on, and, and in that respect, you know, you know, they have some fluff in their numbers. I, I built in, you know, some factors of safety when I do things out, and then I think that's all sort of, you know, to be determined as we go through. And, and certainly, there's a whole host of issues as you get into this, you know, infrastructure costs, connectivity, you know, where you're coming from, impact fees, all those things kind of, it's a lot of sort of moving pieces, and so we'll figure that out as we go along.
Um, just want to make sure that I say that I actually didn't sound at the beginning, because I'm just totally overwhelmed by how this was going to work. But, um, I like the concept a lot. It's a nice land in there.
Yes.
I think it would lend itself to this, and I think it'd be a real challenge for the board to take a look at how this gets implemented, and we start looking at. board to take a look at how this gets implemented, and we start looking at things like design, and how does that affect the design of the commercial, and how does the landscaping work so that the commercial and the residential are working with each other? I mean, this could be very creative. So I just wanted to say, it's not that I don't like the idea, I'm just overwhelmed by the mathematics of it, but, you know, as I say, Karen, I know would be very willing to talk with you. So, thank you.
And I'll just add real quickly, you will be, my vision for this, and, you know, we've sort of been helping them with the sort of design features, is that we had communal gardens and lots of walking trails, and we wanted to make it more of a, not your typical tennis courts, basketball courts type of thing, but, you know, more connected to nature with the, you get a garden plot and some bike storage and that stuff. So I'm excited for what it can be, and I hope that we can keep working towards it and get it there.
And hopefully, too, when this comes back to us, staff will have made a little more progress with the legal analysis and thinking through some of those mechanisms. But, yeah, I agree, it is, it is good to not lose sight of the concept itself, and hopefully we can get past, past the math part of the test and.
Well, I hope to take the math out of it for you guys, and Jay and I and Dan will all work out how that works, and then they can rubber stamp it. That works for me, but, yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. Item number six, Divine Capital LLC requests preliminary subdivision and site plan review for 259 Payne Road, Assessors Map R40, Lot 14, as part of the Contract Zone Amendment. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this application is before the board for what's considered sort of the preliminary site plan and subdivision review process as part of a Contract Zone Amendment. Essentially, the board's job at this time is to determine that the fundamentals of the plan are in place, that can meet or exceed the town's standards for site plans and subdivisions, and presuming that the board is generally comfortable with the direction things are headed, and that the big picture elements are taken care of, understanding there might be some tweaks to the plan that need to happen along the way, but if the board's generally satisfied with the direction thing, the board is being asked to consider a preliminary decision, a preliminary approval, which, that means the applicant then goes back to the council to consider and ultimately make a decision on the Contract Zone Amendment. Once and if the council adopts the Contract Zone, approves the Contract Zone Amendment, it would come back to this board for final approval. The adoption of the Contract Zone by the council's a prerequisite, important component of the board's approval, because that actually establishes that what they're proposing to do can happen per zoning. That's what the Contract Zone is about. So again, stepping back just a little bit, and I know we talked about this when the applicant was before you at public hearing within the last month or so, so I'll just touch on it. The original contract zone for this parcel was approved in 2007, at which time this was really identified as a companion piece to the Cabela's side of the development, the Gateway Shops. This was considered the Gateway Square. There's going to be office space, hotel, daycare development on the site. The applicant is now before this board, the council, with a request to do 288 residential units, so in all residential development. So, let's see, so that's sort of the background. You'll receive staff comments, planning staff comments, as well as comments from Woodern and Kern, our peer review engineers, civil engineers, and Bill Bray, our peer review traffic engineer, looking at the issues. So this is a very sizable project, but it benefits from the fact that there's been substantial review in the past, and frankly, some level of substantial infrastructure development on the site. The off-site improvements have largely been completed and accomplished, which really centered around the development of the Cabela's site. The internal sort of main thoroughfare, if you will, to this property has been installed. The bases and the stormwater pond is largely in place, so there's a lot of the, a lot of the main elements are already there, and now it's really about how does this particular design fit into all that. So with that, as I said, you have a number of staff comments. I think staff is generally comfortable with that, that the fundamentals are in place. And so I'll just touch on a couple of the elements that, to highlight, but I think, you know, just some further consideration, looking at the sort of connectivity of the, within the lot, if you will, particularly between sort of the back buildings and the main sort of area of the site around the, on-site detention pond. And in terms of interconnectivity, the applicant, based on prior discussions, has provided for interconnections with the budding properties, which is what the zoning seeks and the ordinance has seeked, so we're happy to see that, and just want to be sure we continue to develop the specifics around those. One of the items that staff noted is that the applicant is seeking 584 parking spaces, which exceeds the town's minimum, not necessarily a problem, but again, where the board typically seeks to reduce impervious area for a host of reasons, particularly, you know, natural impacts of stormwater, just be sure we're, understand how the applicant came to their desired number of parking spaces, and be sure the board's satisfied with that. Couple other elements that we flagged was, again, there's, the site is currently subject to a DEP permit, and there are certain wetlands impacts that are associated with that permit. And so we, given that it's been a bit of time since the wetlands were delineated on-site, we want to be sure that the areas of impact are well noted and understood, and it might be worth asking the applicant to sort of just redelineate those areas where there's potential for impacts, to be sure that grading and those sorts of things are being well accounted for. I guess another sort of main element that's worthy of discussion, and I know our town engineers already begun the discussion, has to do with some flooding issues the town has been experiencing on Payne Road since this development went in, and really being sure that we're understanding, you know, if there's any causes that are, any cause of the development on this site isn't having any causal effect on that, and if it is, are there ways to make improvements to alleviate those issues? So I just sort of touched on some of the high points. Again, as staff noted, we have a lot of comments here, but we don't think that there's any that are really going to ostensibly modify the plan in any significant way. The applicant may disagree, and that's what we're here to hear about tonight. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay. And applicant here?
I'm just wondering, I may need assistance, I don't see the adapter that normally is here to.
Okay, one second, Mr. Chair. Does this tie in?
There's usually an adapter.
I don't know, it always turns out to be that.
Do you have a computer?
Yeah, right. Why do we have to have that? We've got a long time without it.
You just have a thumb drive? Because what I can do is connect my computer up there, and then you can stick your thumb drive in this.
Perfect.
Drive from there.
Thanks, Jay.
Any one of those spots?
Great. Only file there. Thank you.
Slide it over just a little bit.
Sorry? Turn it up? Don't see it quite yet. Thank you for your patience. I'm Bill Fletcher, attorney for the applicant, and here before you again as part of our Contract Zone approval process. I'm here with other members of our development team tonight. David Deuton with KGI Properties, Tim Wentz with Gate, Gate 17 Architects, Brad Wayman with Assignment Conover Group, and Will Conway with Sebago Technics. And Will and Tim will be taking over the lead of the presentation tonight. So as Jay mentioned, we're here tonight continuing on in the approval process. We're really seeking tonight the preliminary provisional approval of the site plan, subdivision plan, so we can continue on. We know that we'll be back before you for final subdivision site plan approval at a later date. We've reviewed and digested the staff's report, and we're confident we can address the issues and items identified in that report. So without any further delay, I'll turn this over to Will to take you through the presentation.
It's nice to be back before you. This has been a really great project as a designer to be working on, because I think this project is going to be unlike anything else in Maine with the site amenity package. And we're going to get into some details tonight. The project's big, so it's tough to graphically depict it, but we've tried to, to start with the big picture, which I'll turn your attention to here. It shows the buildings, and then the orange line work is the pedestrian sidewalk network, which I think demonstrates a really good sense of interconnectivity within the project. And then these sort of round circles that you'll see throughout the area are patios that I think I explained at Sketch Plan that really evolved out of a meeting that I had with Jay and the fire department in terms of access. And I'll show you more details about that. Then we have the entry at Hagis here, which will be a beautiful landscape statement. The common area, which is this area here in green, which is a big green open space within the project. The pond, which we're sort of handling and designing more as a visual amenity, not something that you really go to frequently, but a central visual amenity to the project. And then the clubhouse with the recreation event area behind it. I think we skipped over a slide here. It skipped one. I think you've gone down. So we'll start here. This is the entrance at Hagis Parkway. You may be familiar with these beautiful stone walls that were kind of built and abandoned. And then we'll be doing heavily landscaped areas in front of those walls and on the top of the wall, sort of plants that'll terrace down, cascade over the walls. And then we'll be introducing a center island here with a monument sign, and then some street trees that begin to define the corridor through the project. And you'll notice, when I was here at Sketch Plan, the thing that you can see on this slide is, we pulled the garages away from this entrance, and instead of those, we're introducing landscape berms with heavy plantings in that area, so that when you enter the site, your views will be oriented to the first two buildings, not to the garage buildings. This is a typical neighborhood in the project, and it shows sort of the area of the building, front of the buildings here with the two entrances, which Tim will talk to you a little bit about, and then the garages across the aisle with a walkway here, the yellow symbols are the site lighting fixtures. And then this is one of those patios that occur throughout the project, that serve as an amenity for the residents to go out, read a book, have a lunch, whatever. But also, a fire truck can pull into these areas from the driveway area itself. This area shows also the edge of the pond here, and this sort of color here and up on the top between the areas for future development, we're going to be doing a wildflower seed mix. So it's a, we'll have maintained lawns in the front of the buildings, and I'll show you in a minute in the commons, but in areas on the edge of the project and around the pond, we're proposing a more naturalized ground cover. This is the commons area here. Again, these are the first two buildings on the right as you enter from Hagis, and you have a big open space, and you can notice this highlighted color would be earth berms complementing this area. And then another gathering space here with benches along the principal access drive. This is the nail building here, with again, another patio fire lane feature in this area here. And you can see in this slide the intensity of landscaping, not only in the fronts of the buildings, but also in the rear. We think that's going to be a really attractive feature to the project. This walkway also will be illuminated with low bollards lights, as well as all of the fire lane patios will have lower scale bollard lighting at night. This is the clubhouse area. Again, this is a major amenity uncommonly found in Maine. The building here, which Tim will talk to you about, the pool area, there's grilling stations, there's a fire pit out here, it's a gathering space for the community. And then immediately to the rear of it is the recreation event area, depicts a volleyball sized court here, and then this is a tent that might be used for a wedding reception or other community-sponsored events during summer months. During winter months, this area will be used for snow storage. It'll be a stabilized turf, so that there's a central location in the project for snow storage. There are other areas for snow storage throughout the project, but this is a primary area that would be envisioned to accommodate that in the wintertime. This is the central area of the project. Again, the pond here at the top, the bright green area is a dog park, which these people are allowed to have pets, and this is a place where they can go and meet other people with pets and have a place to play with the dogs in a fenced area. The red arrow is something that you may have seen in your staff comments, which is, we'll be adding a walkway there, and this is predominantly for the buildings at the bottom of the screen and then way at the bottom of the project to provide better access to this central area. So we'll be providing that walkway as part of our final plan submittal. And lastly, we brought this because staff wanted to get some feeling of how the project would be phased. The clubhouse in these two buildings will be phase one, and then sort of working in a counterclockwise direction, the second, third, fourth, and then this will be the last phase in this location. So I will conclude that part of our presentation and ask Tim to come up and walk you through the building design, and then I'll wrap up, and then we'll entertain your questions at the end.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm one of the partners at Gate 17 Architecture out of Haddonfield, New Jersey. Our practice is solely devoted to doing apartment complexes throughout the eastern United States. The buildings that you're looking at are a 24-unit, three-story slab-on-grade building. It consists of two cubes that are entered through a common staircase and there's four units on each floor. So there's 12 units in one cube and 12 in another. If you look at the architecture, there's many things that we wanted to do to break down the massing of the buildings. The first, and starting from the top and working our way down, is that we wanted to vary the roofline. We did not want it to be a single monolithic slab. And you can see that the ridge line varies and there's also a sectioning of the roof so that it's not just, as I said, one monolithic slab. We are using a six and 12 slope on the roof. And the material that we're suggesting is an architectural shingle that although this wouldn't be the color, we will probably go into more of the grays. You can see that it has a lot of variation and it has a lot of ins and outs to give it some relief. The windows themselves are quite large. A typical window is three feet by five feet. And you can see in many instances that we have them doubled up and even tripled up. This is to give as much light as possible to the inside of the building so that the apartments are feeling very light and airy. We have nine-foot ceilings throughout. The other thing is that the trim around the windows is going to be quite wide so that it will give you a real sense of architectural detailing. The materials themselves for the facades is predominantly a vinyl shake. And it looks like this. This is a very high-quality vinyl material. It's very heavy-duty. And this is the profile that we would have for the shakes. And in fact, this is one of the colors that we would be using. The second material is a lap siding. And what we do is we use a darker color for accenting of the lap siding and a lighter color for the shakes themselves because this is the predominant field. And you can see in this particular slide that the colors we're using for the shake is a light tan and for the clavert siding is a spruce green. So you can see up there that the predominant field again is the tan of the shakes themselves. We also have certain window areas that we have AZAC panels between them. And you can see in the middle section there where there's a white area that's between the buildings. That's to give it a verticality. There's two main entrances that are located where we have a gable roof. And these are the entrances to the staircases. These are accessible entrances and every single unit within the first floor of the building is handicapped accessible. Each unit has its own balcony. The balconies are approximately nine feet by six feet. They have an aluminum railing on them. This is so that the residents themselves can enjoy the outdoors in good weather. And finally, you can see some grills on the building itself. And the grills are for the air conditioning systems because there are no condensers that would be located on the ground. They're actually built into closets, which are on the balconies themselves. Now this slide, what you're looking at is the rear elevation and the side elevations. And what's important to note here is that we are carrying the level of detailing all the way around the building. We're not doing that traditional Hollywood front and then just cheaping out on the backsides of the buildings. The detailing is the same, the materials are the same, the fenestration is the same. And the sides, you can see that there's an enormous amount of fenestration. I'm showing here a floor plan and I don't want to get into too much detail. It's in your package. But you can see that the layout is eight units per floor. And we have a combination of studios, one-bedroom den, two-bedrooms, two-bedroom dens, and These are luxury apartments. The kitchens have granite countertops and stainless steel appliances. There is wood plank flooring throughout the units except in the bedrooms that'll be carpeted. Each unit has its own washer dryer. And as I said before, each unit has its own balcony. And then this is a typical floor, which would comprise the second and third floor. Now, we have a second building, which is a little bit longer than the first one to give us a variation in our apartments. This one is showing the gray color schemes. And the detailing is pretty much identical to the first building that I showed you. And again, the side elevations and the rear elevation shows you that the detailing is the same around all four sides of the building. Again, the floor plan. This particular unit has the three bedrooms, the two bedrooms, and the two-bedroom dens in it. That's the typical floor. And then the units themselves. And again, as I said, the units vary from a 600-square-foot studio all the way up to Now, this is the clubhouse. Clubhouse is quite large. It's almost 5,500 square feet. The materials and the color schemes are the same as the buildings themselves. But what we've added is a third material in that we will be doing a cultured stone along the majority of the front and then creating a water table around the sides of the building. Again, the elevations to the sides and to the rear. In the rear, which opens up into the pool area, what we have is a very large trellis area, which covers a portion of the deck. Then there's the seating area itself. And then in the fenced-in area would be the actual pool. And the seating area will have a fire pit in it. It will have a barbecue area and other amenities. And here you can see the floor plan. And what we have is a large gathering room with a serving kitchen. We have a business center. We have a card room. We have a pool room. We have a media room. We have a large fitness center with a yoga room. And we have the leasing offices themselves. And this will be used by the residents. They can have it for parties, for functions. In some cases, they would actually allow outside parties to rent it if the management so desired. This is the mail pavilion. Now, what this is going to have is all the mailboxes for the center. And they are surrounded, the interior room there, they go around the outside of the building on three sides. Now, in that room is a state-of-the-art package concierge system where UPS or FedEx or even United Postal Service will come in and drop off packages. And then the package, you actually get notified on your smartphone that a package is available with a code. And you can go to this package center and retrieve your package 24/7. Now, this is, there's a couple of things going on here. One is there's a small maintenance building that's approximately 20 by 20 that will service the complex itself. And right next to that will be a 20 by 20 fenced-in area where there'll be a trash compactor and recycling bins. And more detail on the front sign that Will has been talking about. Now, what we did with the garages is that we took the center section and we bumped it out so it would give some relief along the length of the garage. And where you see the rear elevation that is rendered, that is the elevation where it is visible from the street, the back of the garages. And what we would do is we would put windows in the garages. We would do some gable ends. And we would do a trellis work where you would have planting materials that would go up a trellis. Now, this is a second type because within the garages, we have to have handicap accessible garages. So that this elevation, you can see on the right-hand side is the handicap garage and there's a man door to get in it. It's an oversized garage bay. And then finally, what we have are garages which are back-to-back. And these are located more to the center of the project and they serve both sides for the buildings on both sides. And then again, the back-to-back garage will have two accessible garages, which are required by code. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Will.
Thank you, Tim. And I'm going to just conclude by asking for your support tonight to grant us the conditional preliminary approval so that we can continue our process with the council. Also to hear any feedback you have about adjustments that you want us to make before we come back with those final plans. And thank you for your patience and your attention to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to board discussion, we do have the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to come on up and identify themselves and make any comments. Seeing none, we'll turn right to the board then. And Nick, would you like to start us off?
My turn. I think I saw a note on staff comments about mechanicals. Are those roofs up hidden?
No, they will be two, in the rear of each building, two small, you know, three-foot by two-foot units that are for the central common spaces within each building. And as Tim pointed out to you, the grills that related to the air conditioners, those occur in the building. So there's nothing on the ground or on the roof.
And then I have a note here about parking spaces. So is the parking, does the parking count including the garage parking or is that just surface-side spaces?
That includes the garages. And let me talk a little bit about parking. And I may ask for some support, but I'll try to answer it to the best as I can. The goal of the project from the beginning was to get close to, and we did get close to, two spaces per unit. Because even a one-bedroom unit often would be a young married couple that have two drivers. And in East Lime, what happened was they did not design for two. And they had to construct after the fact. So we've designed it into the project to be built initially for close to that ratio.
I, I'm offering an opinion on the parking situation. I'm fine with the excess spaces. I believe if I lived there, I'd probably invite people over quite a bit. Parking in this situation would be a good thing.
I'm sorry, which side?
I mean, I have to say that I guess there's some flooding issues that maybe you got to work through with potentially some flooding issues.
We're going to meet with the city engineer. And if it's something that our project created, not us, but the people that, you know, we will take care of it. If it's something that we're not responsible for, we probably would not agree to it. But if it's definitely as a result of the construction of what's been built to date that caused that problem, we will correct it.
And then I got to tell you, it's a really nice project. And I think Scarborough's really going to benefit from this. If I had one criticism, it's I think you missed by not incorporating a walking area around the pond. I think such a natural feature like that, people would enjoy walking around it. But if that's the only thing you missed on, I think you've done pretty darn good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Before we continue on with the board, I believe there may have been someone who did want to get up and speak, who might have stepped out when we offered that opportunity. So we'll let you say your piece now.
Wallace Spengler, 233 Holmes Road. Good evening, everybody. I'm here concerned about the number of people that will be living there and the impact that it will have on the infrastructure in town. I've been to the town council for several years because my taxes have gone up 30% and my income has not gone up nearly that much. And I've been here since '62, so I've paid my way. So I want to make sure that this development, it's a great development. I have no reservations about the construction or the quality. But I do have a concern about the number of people that are going to live there. And I heard one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. So that means more than likely, you know, be at least two people per unit. And it sounds like there could be some children there. And some people might question my judgment on that. But I know of some people that have million-dollar houses that have kids in school in Scarborough. So just the fact that it's high-end development doesn't mean there won't be an impact on the schools. And I think that the impact fees that you are charging do not cover anywhere near the cost when you talk about $800 or plus CPI adjustments per unit. And then you look at this cost of educating one child, it's $13,000 plus a year. You know, you don't even come close to paying for that education. And when you have to expand the school system, which you're already talking about doing, it's just not enough. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Kenneth Singler. And I live at 6 Mitchell Hill Road in Scarborough, Maine. And I'm here to echo some of the same concerns that the father has. I do, I look at this project and I see it is nicely constructed. And I do believe that it's a beautiful feature and that I do recognize that there is a housing crunch in the general area. But I do also share some of the same concerns about the long-term costs as related to general infrastructure in our town and the, and the cost of educating our children. I've, I have not taught the 38-some-odd years that my mother did at Scarborough High School, but I've spent five years in schools in southern Maine. And I understand some of the costs that go with that. that. I'm also a small business owner here in this town. And I understand what goes along with expanding a business or, in this case, you know, and maintaining a fleet and maintaining facilities and so forth. And I too share some concerns about the long-term costs of building and maintaining adequate facilities and delivering a quality education to our students. And I do question whether or not we ask enough of the builders and developers that bring these additional residents and families and kids to our town, if they share enough of that long-term cost. I'm, being a business owner, I benefit from new construction, as do a lot of people. And I think we get very excited about that because we recognize that there are jobs, both in the general construction and the maintain, maintenance of these buildings and so forth down the road. But we also have a lot of infrastructure that we will have to maintain for years to come, be that schools, roads, expanding police force and other services. And I just want to make sure that we are really giving strong consideration to what those costs are and are we going to, do we raise enough tax revenue really with these structures to deal with the costs of those services? And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Roger?
Okay, thanks. I, I want to echo Nick's comments. I think it looks like a terrific project. And I'm very impressed with the buildings and everything, the architecture and what you're doing. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned where the maintenance building is, that's where the trash is going to be centralized?
Correct.
So people, for instance, in White Pine and Red Pine, what are they going to have to do? Take their trash up to there?
Yes. So think about it as like a suburban transfer station. Many people, like my daughter lives in Arundel, she drives her trash to the transfer station. This is a much shorter drive. You do that on your way to work, on the way to get mail. And what they found in their other projects is, it's good to have it central or, you know, so you don't have scattered dumpsters throughout the project with trash and rodents and things. If you keep it in one place, then the staff can manage it. And so it's just a much more efficient, cleaner way to handle it and less disruptive than having trucks, you know, raising those things up all around the project. It happens, you know, they, this is a much quieter operation. It's not dumpsters. It's a compactor. It gets accessed less frequently. The truck comes, loads it up, takes it away, puts a new one down. It's a much quieter operation and a much better solution to the, the trash problem.
Okay. You, you had mentioned also, I think it was you, the recreation area would be where the snow removal, we call it, the storage, snow storage?
Yes.
Would it, and I think, I think I saw somewhere else on one of these other prints, there's a few other areas where you plan to put snow to.
Yes.
Is it, you feel that's adequate, what you have there?
Depends. In a winter like this, you're going to need this area behind the recreation area. But on a light winter, probably not.
At the last meeting too, wasn't there a discussion about connectivity with the abutting properties?
Yep.
With that in mind, I know to the south where Scammon's property is, that's primarily all pond for the most part, right? And the property over here to the west, the Adams property, I was looking on the tax maps and I noticed that there's some access to Payne Road. So I, I don't think that's really going to be a major issue with this here, this property, in connect, you know, the connectivity.
I'd just point out that the zoning seeks to create connections between properties to sort of enable inner, excuse me, to enable traffic to flow between properties so that they don't have to use Payne Road or Higgin's Parkway to sort of limit the traffic on, on the main roads. And I think there was a plan earlier as part of the presentation that showed some arrows where those interconnections were proposed.
Were those the blue arrows?
Yeah, the blue arrows. So sort of the areas you were just identifying. Because yeah, I think when, as staff looked at, the Scammon property that has a number of funds, there's a lot of development capacity on that lot.
Okay.
And actually, you know, the Adams property has been on the market. And so there's likely to be development that occurs on that property as well.
I don't, I, I think you've responded to a lot of the staff's comments regarding, you know, like access to different.
We don't take any issues with staff comments in terms of, you know, being responsive to them.
In any, in any motion or, or action tonight would be preliminary, so it'd still, it'd still be time to work through some of the loose ends.
I mean, I, I don't really have any, any further questions.
Thanks. Susan?
I don't have a lot of other, goodness, we're all clearing our throats tonight, suggestions either. I'd like to just make a comment, is it okay, to the folks that made a comment?
Absolutely.
I really understand what you're saying. And it's not that the board can do anything about you, but it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to go ahead and have a public opportunity to say that sort of thing. And also because I am a personal bandwagon leader for the new comprehensive plan. So we are coming up with a new comprehensive plan and we really do need all of the town residents to be involved. And the kinds of things that will be discussed at the meetings before the comp plan is developed will impact on the kind of infrastructure questions you have. So make sure you come to those meetings. Thank you. As for this project, I think it's, it's coming along nicely. Kudos for the wildflower seeds. That's totally brilliant. It just needs to make sure it gets watered because if we, if we, you know, I just wanted to say yay. Parking. You said two per unit. So the ones that I see that are outside the buildings will constitute part of those, that's not guest parking?
Well.
You know, we have garage parking and we have extra parking outside.
Yeah. So the two, you have to add them all together. So.
Okay.
What you're saying, surface parking plus garage is about two.
So where, what happens if I'm a guest?
You would be able to access the property. This is their experience in their other projects.
But where do I, where do I park?
You would not park in a garage if you were a visitor. You would park.
Whoa. Okay. So we have a garage, and that's for the people who are residents. And then out in front of the garage, we have lined parking spaces, okay? So I'm assuming that I can come in and the person I want to visit is in building A, number 12.
Yep.
And I'm not going to go into the garage.
Oh, building A, Susan. It has the name of a tree.
Okay.
Second or 12.
Or White O.
Or White O.
I'm just trying to make sure that people are not going to have problems finding places to park when they come in to visit. There's no on-street parking here.
Correct.
So I'm not saying that there's going to be a magical answer to this, but I think it needs to have striping, wording, something so that when I come in, I know where I can park and where I can't park. That's all. I don't want to make a big deal about it.
Yep, okay.
I have never seen a development quite like this where to get anywhere, you have to go between garages. You know, I mean, you can't get there from here. You just have to go around in circles. You, you just follow them garages. It's just very odd. I even, I just.
We're going to make an adjustment, as I pointed out, in, in that location.
Okay. I'll be, I don't have any, let's just say I don't really have any problems for first approval. I have a lot of questions. So when you come for final approval, I'm not going to try to ask all my questions, but I don't think we can expect that there will be approval for the second, the first time you show up.
Fair enough. We'll come as many times as you want to.
Okay, good. Then I, I'm, I'm okay. Oh, yes. And when you come back, I hate to do this, but I, I don't want to drive staff crazy. I'm a landscape person and no matter what it is that happens, I can't read these things. So would you please, when you make the next submittal, take the landscaping pages and make them like, you know?
We'll make a full-size copy and put Susan on it.
Yes. And, and make it so that I haven't got to use a magnifying glass to read what it is you're going to use for landscaping.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Rachel?
Yeah. Kudos on this project. I, I really do like it. I appreciate the care and the details that have gone into it. One of the things that was helpful to me is when you mentioned that the clubhouse would be in the first phase of development. And so often, the amenities are left until the very end.
Mm-hmm.
And the folks who moved in early are waiting a couple of years before they get what they thought they were going to.
They're going to get spoiled.
To get, yeah. So that's, that's, that's a wonderful attraction to folks and, and I'm glad it's in the first phase. I agree with Nick that maybe a walkway around the pond might be a very nice place to stroll. Wildflowers on the side, some sort of a path around there, that would be great. I, I actually, I was intrigued by the way you've presented the studio apartments. I, I liked the layout of those. It wasn't just some giant room and, but thoughtfully done for a young professional, maybe the first time out and on his or her own. Last time, I had a question around storage and I still have some questions around storage. There's no such a thing as too many closets. And young professionals and older folks are very likely to have bikes. And while there may be bike racks, I still don't see a place to store the bikes over the winter. You might want to take a look at putting some sort of bike racks to hang them inside a garage if there's space. Wire shelvings inside a garage someplace for people to put some of their possessions when they downsize perhaps that they didn't want to get rid of, but they still want to rent a storage unit. So I would take a look at that as a, as a possibility. I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I think definitely on the right track as well. Everything that we've seen looks great. I appreciated the thorough presentation and, and the renderings and all the detail there. Terms of the architecture, I think we always appreciate seeing the effort, those efforts made to, to break things up and provide some architectural interest in a way that's not just sort of arbitrary or, or just window dressing and along those lines. I think it's great that, that each elevation is given, given that level of attention. So it's not just the, you know, the Hollywood front as, as was stated by your architect. And that's something that we sometimes have to push and pull on a little bit. So I think that's, you know, that's definitely a, a big positive for this. I do, and I don't remember any of the board members speaking to this, but I, I will agree with staff's recommendation that, given the amount of time that's gone by, the wetlands redelineation is probably appropriate. So I would ask that to go ahead and do that, just, you know, given the scale of this and again, the time that's elapsed since it was last done. And the, the comments on Payne Road flooding, flooding are, are well taken. You know, we never look for whoever happens to be the next one through the door to solve all the world's problems, but at the very least, we want to make sure we don't make it anything worse. Just want to make sure I'm connecting all the dots here. Some good comments about connectivity. I agree about the pond and a couple of the other comments along those lines. And I also appreciate the public comment and the concerns about pressure on town services and, and the budget. And so often, it ends up being about the schools and that is a flashpoint in, in town here, no doubt about it. But there also are other considerations as well, other infrastructure, road capacity and things like that. And as Susan alluded to, this is timely because we are about to embark on a, on a comprehensive plan update. So there will be opportunities to weigh in on that. And we hope people participate in that. You know, there are people at the council level and others and planning staff who are spending a lot of time already looking at the financial implications of these things. And certainly, a project like this will bring substantial property taxes to the town. What that net impact ends up being, you know, is beyond the purview of the planning board certainly, but those are valid concerns to raise. And I will say that in addition to the comprehensive plan process, that, that this will, this particular project will be going back to the council because it is part of the contract zone amendment. So presumably, there will be another opportunity at that level and as part of that process to weigh in as well. So again, certainly some loose ends, but I don't see anything that would prevent us from issuing preliminary approval tonight and then go back to the council. And assuming you come back to us, we'll drill down and as we said, take as much time as we need to take to get, get through and get final. So with that, I will, I don't have a big fancy motion here, but I'd move to grant preliminary subdivision and site plan approval to Divine Capital LLC for 259 Payne Road, assessor's map R40, lot 14, as part of the contract zone amendment.
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck. You can just leave it up there for now. I'll grab it at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Is that a staff report?
Yep. Just want to mention a couple of things to the board. Just let you know that staff has conducted a pre-application review for the 25 Plaza Drive site. That's the one right here at Oak Hill where we did a, a site walk not too long ago.
Oh, yeah.
So I would expect that to come back to the board pretty soon. And we have received and will be conducting a pre-application review for the property that Rusberry Construction is looking to do off of Muzzy Road, the apartment complex up there. And then the other item I just want to touch base on, because it's been in the news and had a couple of phone calls, is regarding 62 Muzzy Road. There was some clearing in the site of the Asian Fusion Restaurant.
Oh, yeah.
So, so there's, there's been a notice violation issued for that site. And just want to let the board know that staff and DEP are working through that and we're, we'll continue to work on that and monitor the site. And it's likely that, you know, the board can expect to hear more from us on that item moving forward. So.
Congratulations.
Just wanted to let you know what's going on with that. That is what I have to report. I don't know if Angela has anything she wants to chime in on.
Yeah, I do. We're having a public meeting for Phillips Brook Watershed Management Plan coming up on Monday at the Dunston Fire Station at 6:30. Robin Saunders is our planning board representative on the steering committee. She's planning on being there. But it is open to the public and open to get some good feedback from some of the stakeholders in the watershed from that. And then looking forward, we're hoping to come up with some, some draft recommendations that we'll present at a, hopefully a joint workshop between planning board and conservation commission and our steering committee and try to get some feedback from, from all of you before we move forward with finalizing a draft for the Watershed Management Plan. Because a lot of that's going to have to do with some order changes and things like that and some looking at development and how we do development within Phillips Brook in the future. And then the last thing I just wanted to say was to thank Roger Beely for agreeing to be our liaison for the transportation committee.
It was the contract.
Thank you, Roger.
Looking forward to that. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks. I was actually going to ask if you did anything on that.
Did you want to do it, Corey?
No, that's all right. Do we have an administrative amendment report?
Nothing to report this meeting.
Nothing to report this meeting.
Good. Any planning board correspondence? Nope. I don't have any to report either. Any planning board comments?
I just have one for Jay. What, the, the house that's next to the Asian Fusion, there was this mess.
So, yeah, that's, so.
What's going on with that?
Well, that, that site, so the DEP regulates streams and there's a, so that site is also under review by DEP because it, even though it's a residential site, you still can't cut within 25 feet of the stream. So that is sort of under the DEP's jurisdiction where, you know, the town, we don't have local regulations necessarily around that, so, but that's being looked at as well.
Okay. I just wondered because it seemed like the same people who were doing the cutting.
I believe that, yes, it was, it's my understanding it was the same contractor did the work and actually those properties, I believe, are in, if not the same ownership, it's.
Oh, okay.
Under one umbrella, as I understand it.
Okay.
All right.
Make a motion to return? Make a motion to return?
To return?
To return, yes. Make a motion to return.
All in favor? Thank you.